So Mr. Romulus, everybody's been let in to the public?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I'll open the Town of Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, being 6:30 PM and have in Quorum. Before we open the first public hearing, I'll read a notice pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order suspending input, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation due to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of the members will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours, we will post the link of the recording on the town's website and/or other town social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Patrick Driscoll, the Chair, Mr. Raymond Jimmian, the Vice Chair, Mrs. Jean Garino, the Clerk, Mr. Michael McDonald, and Mr. Stephen Geller. During the meeting, all votes of the Board will be taken via roll call. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Ms. Jennifer Burke, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Elijah Romulus, CSIS and Town Planner, and Mrs. Wellesley Door, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The Board's mic will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If you here are here for a public hearing that allows for public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. The Chair will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the Chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And I think, Ms. Burke, if I'm correct, the one change we made to this notice is the chat feature will be off, and either you or Mr. Romulus will manage that and take the people in order that wish to speak.
That's correct.
So, Pete, do you want to open your here?
I'm going to open a meeting of the County Council's Community and Economic Development Committee. I'm Peter Colombo, the Chair. With me also is Fred Chase, member, and Bill Wood, member, in his inaugural meeting with this committee.
Okay, so.
Do you want to open the hearing?
Yeah, being 6:30 PM, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance D. FY21-003, zoning map amendment. We want to amend the zoning map to change the boundary of the industrial E by rezoning the lots listed in business B, listed to business B. Map 71 lots 12, 16, 18 to 23, 44, 47, 66 to 69, 76 to 78, and map 84 lot 43. Do we have to read a public hearing notice?
You should.
Do we have that, Mr. Romulus?
It was in your packet, I thought. Was it not? It is in the packet.
Was it in the packet?
Yes, it is in the packet.
I can read it. I have it right here.
Okay, good.
I don't have it in the packet. I have the ordinance.
Town of Bridgewater Community and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board Notice of Joint Public Hearing pursuant to Section MGLs, Chapter 48, Section 5. Notice is hereby given that the Community and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing to receive public input on the following proposed ordinance. The hearing will be held November 4th, 2020 at 6:30 PM at a virtual meeting over Zoom. And instructions to participate in the meeting will be posted on the calendar on the town's website. Ordinance D-FY21-003, zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment, Pleasant Street, which seeks to change the boundary of industrial E by rezoning the following lots to business B. Map 71 lots 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 44, 47, 66, 68, 69, 76, 77, and 78. And map 84 lot 43. The detail ordinance is available at the town's website at www.bridgewaterma.org with the town clerk and the town council clerk.
Okay, so Pete, do you want to open up yours? Is the meeting open or does Pete have to open it up as well?
He should open that. I opened my meeting, but is it a separate hearing, Jennifer?
It is a separate hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to open a hearing of the Town Council's Community Economic Development Committee, 6:37.
So if it pleases both committees, I can explain what we're proposing to do. I know, well, he was on, Council Rushden was on the, I don't see him now, but was on, and he's one of the sponsors, but I can explain what the proposal is proposed, if you'd like, if that makes things easier. Does that work for everybody?
Makes sense.
Okay.
So this started basically, the town manager and I were having a conversation with the property owner at map 71 lot 20, which on the map that's on the screen is on the corner of Elm and Pleasant Street in the sort of light green area, which, as we all know, has been vacant for a while and sale signs for a while, and it's been rumored to have several proposed developments there for a while. And in conversations with him, it's been realized that several of his proposed tenants have, when they've gone through our zoning and really the actual by right allowed uses were in that zoning district, it became more difficult for him to lease out that property. So he was reaching out to Michael and I to determine what could, if anything, be done or what we would like to do or anything like that. So while I was looking at the proposed uses, and then I saw what is actually along that stretch of Route 104, all of, almost all, if not all of those uses are non-conforming at this time. They're all zoned industrial. There is a small portion of Gateway, which is that corner, and there is one house lot, which is residential. Everything else is industrially zoned. All of those uses, which are commercial in nature, whether it be restaurants, or Home Depot, or the car wash, or a gas station, are non-conforming or need a special permit to operate in that zoning district. By zoning it business B, we're making all those uses conforming by right. They are all by right, and making it just easier for people to make a change. For an example, when Mr. Ron Emma came before the planning board last year when he purchased the Bridgewater Savings Bank lot next to his Emma's restaurant, because he wanted to put a restaurant in there, a waffle breakfast restaurant, he needed a special permit to do that, because a restaurant wasn't allowed by right when it sits next door to an existing restaurant. So it just didn't make sense moving forward, right off the highway, to not allow those uses by right. We've got the one vacant lot on the corner of Elm and Pleasant, and then I believe there's one other vacant lot next to Home Depot that could also potentially be leased up. We did reach out. We sent letters to every property owner that would be affected by this change. We heard from two back, both positively and in favor of the change. We have not heard any negative feedback at this point. So that's sort of my brief presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions. I see Council Rushden has joined us. I know he's one of the sponsors. If he has anything to add, I'd be happy to have him speak as well.
Jennifer, can I just ask, what effect would this have on the existing house lot? Is there a house?
There is a house that actually was recently sold. He, that, the owner was actually one of the property owners that reached out back to us. Some of you may know him. His name is Dave Canepa. He actually was very much in favor of this change and was actually very appreciative of the town taking a proactive initiative to bring those lots into conformance with their current uses. So that would change that one house lot from residential to business. It would do, yes.
And first question. So the color coding, I understand that the lots with the light yellow, I think it is, but the dark green is that already zoned, because those lots are on the list?
I think it's just the yellow mixed with the blue, made of that green color. And, and when we did, when Elijah did the math, that was, the underlying is blue, and when you overlay the yellow on top of it, it makes it that green color. It's a little confusing.
It's not in the legend, you know, so.
Yeah, I know. I saw that today, too, and I said, that's going to be a question. So I would say anything in the yellow or the green would be changed.
Ms. Burke, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So we're actually changing some residential as well to business B, correct?
So the only full lot that's residential, I believe, is 7147. 7112, while the rear of it is zoned residential, it already, I believe, has a commercial property on it, as does 7176.
So my, I guess my concern is that 8443?
Yeah.
So that has, that was furnished on Old Pleasant Street that's highly residential?
Right, but I believe it already has a commercial property that fronts on Pleasant.
And that, that may be true, but now somebody, from what I understand in zoning, you can't access a commercial property from a residentially zoned piece? So technically, if we zone that little L strip and give access to, to Old Pleasant Street, that's a highly residential street. You could have commercial dump trucks or whatever is allowed going in and out of there in a residential zone. Then if we just left the line where it was, then have to access it from Pleasant Street. I just think we might be opening up a can of worms, so you're going to give commercial access on a residential street?
That's, I guess that's your decision to make.
So there's residential houses on either side of that, of that yellow strip coming through to Old Pleasant Street, and you have a lot of subdivisions, Conchetta Drive across the street, and Katy Court, and that's highly residential. I, I just, my concern is that you might, you might be opening up a can of worms if we allow some sort of a street or driveway or an access to come out that way if for a commercial use.
So the only remedy would be to subdivide that lot, right?
Well, just keep the line where it is, and they can't go beyond 30 feet into the residential zone.
I guess, Pat, I don't understand what you mean by keep the lot line where it is, because right now, that whole lot, or part of that lot is zoned industrial and part of it is zoned residential. So you're saying only two?
Well, right, it looks, well, it looks, it looks, it looks like right now, 8443. The darker green is already zoned industrial E and would be changing business B, right?
Correct.
But now you're adding the yellow sliver to the back of it, which gives it access to a residential neighborhood.
So your suggestion is just to change the piece that is only, that is already industrial, only the residential piece alone?
Well, I think if all those residential people knew that they were going to have a commercial access off this street, I don't know how, I mean, I think that's, that's not a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Sure.
I'm just curious whether, in light of this discussion, whether residents of Old Pleasant Street have been notified as a butters?
No, we don't typically notify butters of zoning changes. It's advertised in the paper. It's published on the website. That's the legal process. We don't typically notify butters.
I just think we're changing, we're changing. I agree with the, the change of the industrial E to the business B. It brings those businesses more in line. The one change other than uses, lot size will go from 43,000 to 10,000. I don't think that's a big deal. I, I just think that having the ability to put a commercial street, a commercial roadway, a commercial driveway off of a residential neighborhood is, is a bad thing, and we'd want that to be accessed from Pleasant Street where there's frontage.
As it stands now, that, that the industrial use of that lot could be accessed through the residential street, right?
No.
You can't access a less restrictive zone for a more restrictive zone. So you can't access business or industrial through a residential zone. But again, I believe 8443, I'd have to look up the status data, but I believe that already has a business on it that fronts on Pleasant Street.
Correct, but they could put a second egress out. They could, they could cut a road into, you know, let's say that's Motocars International, which it may or may not be. They could, they could cut a road between two residential houses. And have a rear access.
I don't know if they have enough frontage. Well, that's.
I think, I think, I think it's, I think that's vacant 8443.
I'm sorry?
I think that's vacant, that 80.
Okay.
Jennifer, did you just say you can't from a business or an industrial? So you still wouldn't be able to, would you?
No, what I said was you can't access a business or industrial district from a residential district. So if that's state residential, they would not be able to access the backland. We'll call it backland, the backland, which would be business, in this case, from that residential portion.
Let me clarify then. I'm getting confused.
Okay.
Are we saying that right now, they cannot use that strip as an access to?
Right now, they cannot. That's correct.
And if it goes to business, they still cannot, or they can?
Theoretically, they could.
All right. Then I think the Chair has a point.
I mean, the likelihood that they drive all the way up there for a back egress is probably slim, but then again, it's available if you do that.
Do we know how many feet of frontage that is, though?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to look it up.
Because if it's 100 feet, it could become a commercial lot in a residential zone. Because we're also reducing the frontage as part of this. So we would essentially be allowing somebody to create a, a commercial lot in a residential neighborhood.
I don't, I don't want to speak for the sponsors of the article, but I'm sure if you wanted to, as your first suggestion was, leave that, a piece of that line where it was.
Yeah, I just did a quick measurement. It's got about 140 feet of frontage on Old Pleasant. So.
So that would, that would create, that could create a commercial lot stand alone in a residential neighborhood. You could have a five-unit garage building with excavators back there and have two houses on either side.
Why not zone that one piece residential?
It is currently. It is currently.
So can we change part of it with leaving a restriction on that one piece of, on that one lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can, we can zone, we can leave it, leave the lot and just rezone the industrial portion of that lot, if that's the question.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of changing the, what's already industrial to business B, but I just don't think adding, making a residential piece. I mean, you, whoever owns that lot could just cut that back piece off and forget it being an access. You could have, you could have a commercial building put there in a residential neighborhood.
Somebody repairing trucks or something.
Yeah, that'd be a disaster. Because, because as part of the zoning change, in addition to use, we're going from a 40,000 square foot lot with 200 feet of frontage to a 10,000 square foot lot with 100 feet of frontage. And if that has more than 100 feet of frontage, and they, they have, they can, they can create a commercial or business lot in a residential neighborhood.
I think, I think we all understand that. So I think if there's any other comments, we should get those on the table, too.
I'm confused about that, that leg of 43. So is it currently residential or is it commercial?
It's currently, it is currently residential.
So if the idea is to leave it residential, and how could something commercial be built on it?
But that's, that's the, if we, but right now, it's being proposed to the whole lot, so that leg would be changed to business. I believe Pat's suggestion would be to leave that leg alone and leave that residential. So if we left that leg residential, that would not be allowed to be built on as commercial.
But, 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 Bill, I think, so 8443, that lot, it has plenty of frontage on, on Pleasant Street. It's just, it's just that that leg extends into a residential neighborhood, and it's more than 100 feet wide potentially. So that could not only be an access, that could be a commercial lot in a residential neighborhood.
I understand what you're saying. So if, if it were, if it's state is residential, but the rest changed to business, that would satisfy the need to put business on, on?
Pleasant Street.
So we can, we can split the zoning with a lot, a lot can be split.
It's not, it's not ideal. You typically like to keep zoning boundaries along lot lines, but in this case, I could see the point of why you would want to do it. So, you know, you can do it. It's done all over town.
I just want to let you know that there are two public comments. What was that, Elijah? I didn't catch that. There are two public comments. Okay.
So whenever, if you guys, if the boards and committee are all set or want to open up to public comments, you can talk about this.
Yeah, I would suggest we hear from them. We can, that doesn't preclude us from asking more questions, right?
No, no, of course not. Elijah, do you want to unmute the first person with a public comment?
Yes, so the first person is Melissa Raymondetta. I will be asking you to unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. This is Melissa Raymondetta from 317 Lakeside Drive in Bridgewater. Thank you for taking my comments. In particular, I wanted to talk about map 84 lot 43, which you were just referring to. The northerly part of that lot that fronts Route 104 is actually, according to the Mass. GIS maps, which you can find online, is entirely wetlands, as well as a very large portion of the east, actually the eastern part of the lot. So I know that you're talking about splitting the lot and the residential impacts of that as well. I did, however, just wanted to bring up to you that about 60% of that lot appears to be wetlands, the entire part of the portion that fronts Route 104. So this could be potentially problematic going forward, and I think from an environmental perspective would also be problematic. I don't think that this is Motocars International. I believe it's owned by somebody else, and you can also find that on the Mass. GIS map, so I'd like to refer you to that. And just one comment about lot 47, map 71, excuse the noise. The part facing southward from this lot actually gives four different households some shelter and kind of, you know, a break from the Route, Route 104 traffic and noise. And I think the development of that lot will likely be problematic for those residents. And I was kind of surprised to hear that they weren't notified. But those are, those are my comments. I thank you for, for listening, and have a good night.
So the next one was from Matthew Rushden. I'm not sure if he's still online.
I am. I am. Thank you very much. I appreciate the chance to just briefly comment. I think the Chair makes a really excellent point in this proposal. I know certainly if I lived on Old Pleasant, I'd be extremely upset to find out that that strip at some point in the future would allow access. I'm glad to hear so far that the conversation is in support of the proposal, but I certainly think that, you know, Jennifer and her team, if they could go back, although they're not in favor of slicing through the lot, but I think that ideally, we don't want access on a residential street, certainly don't know what could happen down the road in that area, and it significantly changes the proposal, in my opinion, because it does have an impact in a residential neighborhood, because you really can't predict the future. I would love to see somebody make a motion to adjust that, whether or not it has to go through Town Council, or you can make that recommendation. But I have to leave for a 7 o'clock meeting, and I just appreciate the chance to just briefly touch upon that, that I support, you know, some of the changes that Pat has talked about in this meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks, Matt. That concludes the public comments. I guess I'd like to make a formal motion to split that lot along that existing line to cut off that leg and keep it within, keep its own residential.
I would second that motion.
So does each, does each body vote independently, or how does this work, Jennifer?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yes, you would each vote your own recommendation back to the full council. There's one other thing that I forgot to mention that I need to throw in there. If you look quickly at the map in front of you, lot 71-46, up in the north corner by Route 24, that little small chunk is owned by Decam, the state of Massachusetts. That was not listed in the, in the actual ordinance under the lots to be changed. I don't think it matters one way or the other, if you want to change it or if you don't, but if you do want to change it, you need to amend the ordinance to include that lot. Again, it's owned by the state of Massachusetts through the Department of Asset Management. I don't know that they're ever going to do anything with it, so it's probably fine the way it is, but just wanted to point that out. So, but to answer your original question, Council Colombo, yes, you each would need your own motion and vote to recommend whatever you choose back to the council.
Any comments from the Community Economic Development Committee? Any discussion on this motion?
No.
Okay, I'll call the vote. Call in favor. We need a roll call vote?
You have to roll call. Yeah.
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
And I will be a yes. So three to nothing to recommend splitting that lot to include the leg, to keep the leg in the southeast corner as residential.
Is that, though, a recommendation for the rest of the zoning as proposed?
So I just, Ms., Ms. Burke, can I ask you one more question?
Yeah, can I just get a clarification on this?
That's a motion to amend the ordinance.
Okay, just to amend. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So we want to make it easier for business, and I think that business B uses, I went through the whole table and highlighted, you know, what changes and what doesn't change. So two, two questions. So I don't think it would be a problem, but one of the changes that business B would allow in this zone would be, we'd allow solar in the zone, where we don't currently. Do you see that to be a problem or no?
I don't. Oh, as you previously pointed out, the lot size is reduced to 10,000 square feet. I'm not sure that any solar company would want to put solar on 10,000 square foot lot. But that being said, again, to my knowledge, there's two vacant buildable lots on this property. I know of one who already has tenants interested, because they've contacted me particularly about this zoning, when they heard about it and wanting to know when it was being placed, because they have a convenience store potentially with a restaurant drive-through that they're interested in. So that one is already potentially in play. is already, um, potentially in play. And then the other one is next to Home Depot, and I can't imagine that lot is, is pretty tiny. It's, um, I believe it's, um, seventy-one sixty-seven. So I don't know that that's big enough for any solar field.
All right. And then my last question is, is, is I, I understand, you know, making it easier, but and, and you mentioned the restaurant we recently approved under a special permit. I, I thought it went pretty smooth. The one thing that I like about the special permit, especially where it abuts residential uses, is the special permit allows us to condition it like, um, you know, screening and things of that nature and ask for additional plantings, where we don't have very good site plan requirements in town right now. Um, and hopefully we can up, upgrade the zoning to have better site requirements. You know, the, the special permit is nice, especially when it abuts a residential property. But, um, you know, hopefully we can, uh, uh, excuse me, hopefully we can upgrade the zoning to take care of that at some point.
That's the goal.
Um, could I ask a question at that point, since the chair sort of reminded me of something?
Sure.
It's a little bit out of context, but, um, is this zoning change part of the piecemeal approach we're taking to zoning now, like, since we spent, what, a couple of years on a a massive overchange and nothing happened? And I was told that we're going to um, do this piecemeal. Is this one of the parts of it? I mean, I, I, I was
No, this is
I was told this made that we stopped the process in the first part. So I'm not sure where, where we are right now.
So we didn't stop. We stalled the process. Um, uh, our consultant attorney, Bobrovsky, is actually currently working on a new version to be brought back. Um, most likely next month. Um, he was trying to work on it sooner, but he had, um, some other obligations come up that he couldn't. So he is working on that now, and I'm hoping to get that back before, um, the town next month sometime. So that is
So it will be a comprehensive change?
There, it will be a somewhat comprehensive change. It will not be as comprehensive as it was previously.
Thank you.
So it is, um, either the CE, do you see them want to vote on its amendment, or does the planning board want to make any kind of motion at this point?
Um, if I may interject, there is one member of the public that has raised your hand, uh, if the chair wants to.
Yeah, the public hearing's still advancing.
Okay, um, Pat Neary, um, I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, Pat Neary, two twenty-five Lakeside Drive. I just have a question that I hope you can clarify. Someone mentioned that it wasn't necessary to notify the abutters regarding this zoning change. I thought there was a requirement to notify anyone within three hundred feet of, uh, a property that was considering a change like this. Maybe you could, uh, clarify that for me. I might be under a wrong impression.
So, uh, Mass General Law requires, um, when you are applying for a special permit or a site plan or a conservation permit or a zoning board permit, that you are notified the abutters to the abutters, which is the abutters within three hundred feet of the property lines. When you are making a wider zoning change through a zoning amendment, there is no requirement under Mass General Law to notify any abutters.
That doesn't seem acceptable, but if that's the way it is, I suppose we have to accept it. I hope that that's going to be addressed in those next zoning recodifications. Thank you. I would want to be notified if there was going to be a zoning change in my neighborhood.
Yeah, can I, I'd like to respond to that. I think, well, it might not be required by law. There's, I would imagine there's nothing preventing the town from instituting some sort of policy whereby, I don't know, perhaps citizens could submit their email address with their, with their, their address and if I think it'd be costly for us to have to send out, you know, mailings to each, each abutter. Sending an email wouldn't be much of a problem, so that's
So, yes, so yes, Mass General Law does allow for if, um, a resident property owner has requested notification of all zoning changes in the town through the, I believe it's the town clerk's office. Then we would send those out as well. Um, we did town clerk and council clerk, and nobody had, um, requested to be notified of any zoning changes. Um, and just to be sure, because I, I believe, you know, there's been some confusion about that in the past. We did confirm with the town attorney regarding the requirements for notification, and he, um, agreed with Mass General Law that there was no requirement that, um, abutters should be notified in this instance.
So that might be something the council would publicize to citizens, make them more aware of that, of that right. That's another thing, another issue, though.
And, um, may I say something on the property? If, um, according to Ms. Raymondetta, or if that is wetlands on the Pleasant Street business side, possible business side, then yeah, they would probably want to use that back. If the back property was buildable, they would like that business. So, yeah, I think it needs to be chopped off so that it stays residential.
I mean, it, it could become its own lot as well. I mean, that's even scarier, so.
Yeah.
Does the planning board want to make, have any more discussion on it? Do we, do we want to make a motion? I mean, generally, I support the idea of industrial B going to business B in this, this Route one oh four corridor. I just don't like extending it into a residential zone.
I'll make a motion, just ensuring that we, as the, uh, as the council did, that we cut off the, the section there, uh, from the zoning change and keep it residential.
So, um, Ms. Burke, procedurally, don't we have to vote this up or down, and then we can send a letter with a recommendation? Or do, or can we do what the CED did and just ask, ask it to go back to the council?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the planning board should, um, you can make a motion to recommend or not recommend. And then you could say, yeah, you have to vote it up or down, and then send your letter to the, to the council. That's correct. So if you're not recommending this change as presented, you vote it down. You, you don't recommend it. You don't vote it down. Don't recommend as presented, but you could send the letter to say you would recommend it if that southernmost leg was removed from the equation.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think basically we want to keep that real line of eighty-four forty-three in its current form. But, Mr. Jimmy, and I'm sorry, do you want to keep your
Now, I, I, what, what I'm hearing is we cannot, uh, at the planning board cannot, uh, recommend eighty-four forty-three without that segment. We have to include it.
So you're, the planning board is reviewing the amendment, the zoning change as proposed. You, the planning board is either reviewing it to recommend as presented to you or not as presented to you. If it is presented to you, it's not acceptable, then you would say, I, I'm not recommending this, but I recommend it if X. So I believe that would be the best course of action for the planning board. The Community Economic Development Committee, members of the council, can make a re, proposed recommendation to modify the article. The planning board cannot do that.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Jimmy, do you want to modify your motion to?
I just want to make sure that, um, that the modified version is not considered a positive recommendation. Um, so, in, in a sense, by not recommending it based on the sliver, it's the same thing as if we say we recommend it as long as you don't include the sliver. Um,
I, I, I think that, Ms. Burke, I think the council will get the general point if we do what Mr. Jimmy said, and just say we're in favor of it with the proposed amendment.
Yes, you could say we don't recommend as proposed, but in the, in the joint hearing with the developing committee, we understand that they're proposing an amendment. We would be in favor of it with that amendment.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'll, I'll make that motion, as Ms. Burke just said. Now, we're in fa, I'm in favor, we're in favor of the amendment, um, as long as the, um, that one sliver going, that goes out to Pleasant Street is excluded.
Well, I think we should be clear and say that the residential portion, the residential portion of eighty-four forty-three stays residential.
Correct.
I'll second that, if it's worded right.
I think we can get the gist. This is just the recommendation for the council, Ms. Burke, that's going to go out in the letter, correct?
Correct.
All right. So do we have, we have a motion, a second, a discussion? So, Mr. Geller? Mr. Geller, you there?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, yes, is, is it not, uh?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Does the CE, do you see want to make any other, um, motions? Are you just recommending that amendment back to the council? Pete, you're muted.
Uh, can we recommend passage with that amendment or not?
Yeah, you can, because you are counselors.
Okay, so I would, uh, welcome a motion to recommend passage.
I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend passages amended.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on recommending passage with the passed amendment we made? Okay, um, roll call vote, um, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So three, nothing to recommend passage with the amendment.
Then you just both need to close your hearings.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? So moved?
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
So, so, Ms. Burke, just so we're clear, the, the light green portion of eighty-four forty-three is going to go back to tan. The dark green is going to remain, correct?
Well, I can't commit to that because I'm
No, 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 but, but
That will be the, I believe that will be the recommendation back to the full council, yes.
All right. So there's, there's two slivers. See, there's another little sliver there, too.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, because it's like a, there's like a, all right. Okay. Do we have to do anything else on the planning board's side, Ms. Burke?
On this issue? No, you have other issues this evening. I don't know if the CEDC has anything else they need to do tonight.
No, I, I guess I'll call, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Your second? Mr. Wood?
Well, you're, you're muted, Bill.
Yeah, work habit. That's a work habit. Um, yes.
Okay, and I will vote yes. Okay, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's not, there's nothing else for us tonight. We've adjourned our meeting, so.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So you guys can sign out. You're welcome to stay, or you can sign out if you'd like. You're welcome to spend the night with us.
Another time, another time. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Good night. All right. So next up on the agenda of Old Fields Estate, Old Field Estates Phase One, Latola Homes. Mrs. Green, are you up to go reading?
Oh, okay, sorry. Dated October eighth to Patrick Driscoll, Chairman, Bridgewater Planning Board. Dear Mr. Driscoll, Latola Homes is requesting a two-year extension for Phase One of Old Field Estates. We have four more homes to build, but feel that a two-year extension would slash should make the total completion of the project possible. As you know, COVID nineteen has created many changes in the building industry, and selling homes is becoming more and more interesting with low interest rates and seriously high lumber prices. Thank you, Paula Latola, Latola Homes, Inc.
I think you froze.
Yeah, I think you froze.
Uh, well, I can give the planning board a, I can recite the little blurb that I sent out in the meantime. Uh, so the applicant, as you saw, requested a two-year extension for subdivision approval. Uh, according to the conditions of approval, the construction of all ways and services and installation of all municipal services shall be completed within a period of two years from the date of endorsement of the planning board. Uh, the subdivision was approved on January fourth, twenty seventeen. A previous extension was granted by the board on October seventeenth of twenty eighteen. That moved the expiration date from January four, twenty nineteen, to January four, twenty twenty-one. Um, as the applicant cites the current pandemic and associated economic ramifications as reason for the request, uh, the department suggests granting a two-year extension from January four, twenty twenty-one, to January four, twenty twenty-three.
So do we have any discussion or a motion? Did I lose everybody again, or is everybody just ignoring me?
Oh, you're back.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension.
Do we have a, uh, an extension to the proposed date by Mr. Romulus?
Yes, exactly.
Which was?
Twenty-one.
All right. So do we have a second for that? Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, the, uh, you know, these, these, uh, requests are normal, are always seem to be for two years. Uh, I didn't get in the letter any specific reasons why, other than general reasons in terms of the pandemic and but I didn't quite understand the need for it. I guess maybe somebody could, um, enlighten me. I mean, for a two-year, I can maybe see a one-year, but I'm just not, uh, uh, we seem to automatically give two-year extensions. I'm just questioning the, the, the need right now. So.
I guess I can respond. Um, so, uh, just based on what the applicant had said, um, I guess they have the four homes left to build, and, um, they, like you had mentioned, cited the pandemic and economic reasons. And the way it's conditioned, um, they have to, uh, complete those homes and the, um, associated uh, utilities that go with it, within the time of, the two-year time.
And I, and I would just also just add that, um, the legislature has told all, um, deadlines and expiration dates for all permits and projects during the state of emergency. We're currently still in a state of emergency and not so assuming that we'll still be in a state of emergency on January, whatever, fourth or whatever it was, their extension would not expire at that point anyway, and it would be extended out through the end of the state of emergency and an additional forty-five days. So they would get that extra time anyway because of the COVID, uh, regulations through the state legislature. Um, just by giving them the two years now, you're just giving them the two years. So, I, you're, I don't think you're giving them any extra time that they're going to get anyway, to be honest with you, because of COVID and the regulations set by the state, but
they would be asking for it anyway, because
Well, they would get, they would get probably an additional, I mean, they're going to get, I mean, I don't see the state of emergency being lifted anytime soon.
Yeah.
On the governor's press conference. So, you know, let's just say it's still a state of emergency through January, and then they're going to get another forty-five days after that. So, that's, you know, March sometime.
Hmm. And they'd be still, e- even if there weren't COVID, they would be asking for it now anyway.
Probably, yes, yes.
All right. So, if there's no more discussion, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
You're a gentleman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Um, next up, we just have a standing item that, um, we had, we had talked about in regards to coming up with some sort of a, working with, um, Community Economic Development Office to come up with some sort of zoning policy for site plans and, um, true, tree planting requirements. I apologize, I did start to pull some stuff together, Mr. Jimmy, that we talked about at the last meeting. I do have some that I'm not ready to give it to, um, Mr. Romulus yet. Um.
What are you referring to?
Uh, the, we, you know, we talked about Rainham and some other towns having a tree planting requirement for site plants.
Um, no.
I'm pulling some surrounding counts together, and I have a couple, but I just, I haven't spent any time since I pulled
My suggestion.
Pat, what, sorry to interrupt, Pat, whatever you have, you can just send to us, and then we can look for other, that, that's our job. You shouldn't have to be looking at other towns for that stuff. That's not your job.
Well, I'll send you what I, I'll send you what I have this week.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, don't spend a lot more time on it, because we will do that. We have
Well, that's why, that's why I'm delayed. I haven't had a lot of time, and I, I have, I pulled a few things from Rainham and West
Elijah, Elijah and I have networks and resources we can, um, contact in the other communities, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Let me just quickly, uh, give an update for the meeting we had, um, which was, I believe, in October, last week in October, where, um, Jennifer, Michael, Kim, um, Elijah, who else, Phil Malpe, Matt, um, where we did, we, we did decide that, um, that we would, uh, set up a tree board, that would, that Michael would set it up, and he would look to the community for volunteers, and that the committee were, this new committee, which he will form, will work in conjunction with the Community and Economic Development Department to come up with the functions of a permanent tree board. So, um, we also, you know, brought up the issue of mitigation, or, or if we can require mitigation, and that's going to go towards town council to make a decision on that. And that this whole thing will come together the first week in January, where we can sort of hopefully make some sort of, uh, decision to move forward. So, if you have anything, Pat, by all means, send it to Jennifer.
All right, I will, all right, definitely. But I, I think just because this fell off the radar last time, that's why I just asked Mr. Romulus to keep it on as a standing item until we decide we want to take it off the agenda. So, why don't we just keep it on for the next meeting, and if there's anything to add, we can add. If not, we can just skip over it.
I, I, I honestly, I mean, you can, but I don't see the need to keep it on for now, anyway, till the end of the year, anyway, maybe after that.
Okay. So, I'll send over to Jennifer and Elijah what I have. If there's any need to put it back on, we can put it back on, but we can remove it going forward if, if you have made some progress with this, with that.
I think that's true of any member of the board. Also, if they come up with anything, send it to Jennifer and Elijah.
Great.
I am muted.
I know my allergies are killing me today. I didn't, I didn't take my allergy pill. I'm paying for it now. Um, all right. So, we have minutes that, um, Mr. Doran included in our packet, the ten fourteen twenty. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I, I did scan through them. Did anybody else?
I, I haven't, I, to be honest with you, I didn't. So, I have them in front of me now, but, I mean, I do we want to table it to the next meeting?
Uh, okay.
If, if people haven't read them, why don't we just, we can add these minutes to the next meeting's agenda?
Okay.
Yeah, sounds like a plan.
And I'll re-read through them.
Anything else? Anything else from staff that we need to go over, or?
Um, no, just to let everybody know, um, that, uh, Jason Collins, the town attorney, is, um, going to be doing a executive session with you folks on December second at six thirty, um, to discuss litigation, um, in process. So, just be, we'll, uh, send you more information on that as it gets closer.
Um, I've been having some connection problems, and I missed who made the, um, second on the motion to grant the extension. Mike made the motion to grant the extension to January fourth. Who made the second?
I believe that was Mr. Geller.
I did.
Geller, thanks, Steve.
So, quickly, if, if I own a lot hypothetically, and my neighbor wants to change his zoning or applies for a zoning change, I don't have to be notified as an abutter?
Correct.
Well, it seems to me, out of courtesy, we should.
Yeah, so if you, if you, it would just be, it would just become financially undaunting for our community every time they made a zoning change. Um, I mean, and when we do a, a broad sweeping zoning codification, we would notify the whole town and send a their notice to everybody in the town. It just becomes very cost prohibitive, so that, like, that's why they don't require that you do that.
Well, I think that when you do the, uh, townwide change, that's different. Uh, I mean, the people should be aware through whatever social media, whatever that we're, we're doing that. But when it's, you know, a, a small portion, a block or two, that zoning change takes place, I, I, I see the town should, uh, just out of courtesy, it's, it seemed to me that we should be doing
The problem comes once you do it for one, you have to do it for everyone. So, if we did it for this one, we have to do it every single time. And so, no matter how large an area, what the scope is, you'd have to do it. So, we, that's why we follow the Mass General Law requirements.
Well, I think we should look at the possibility of doing it. If I were abutting a, a section that was changed, the zoning was changed, I'd be upset about it. It's only on only courtesy.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn if there's no more discussion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, do a second by Mr. Geller? So, Mr. Ajemian?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Nice short meeting, right?
Yeah.
Wild one.
Good night, everyone.
All right, everyone.
Have a good one.